America. And as we were rebalanced, one nation under a invincible justice for all.
Well, yes, well, so in first time tonight on our agenda is any of me. Oh, we are entitled on this. This territory of the long people are the original inhabitants of Washington, northern coast. And this throughout the territory. According to this, this area has time, there's time, there's time to avoid. They have celebrated my underwater ways on traditional and social and I see it where other people. The only access that he acknowledged to have private and super many people. Has our little Thank you. So next slide one, my agenda, item 2.01 is the adoption against the agenda. And just I'm sure whether anyone
I'd like to motion for adopt the agenda ever.
Okay, then move to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, so you can find us in here. Right? All those. Okay, if agenda is adopted. So if that will move on, item 3.01, which is a mid search report from R plus leadership associates. Congrats to our superintendent search and they will be joining us by zoom.
Are we there? We are, can you hear us?
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you ready for us, Kevin?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and start for the benefit of the audience. I'm Wayne Robertson and this other face you see on your screen is Mark Vin. And we represent Northwest Leadership Associates, the search firm that's working with your school board and your school district and staff to select your next superintendent. We're well into the search, we're about to hit the turn at the halfway mark. And so one of the things we like to do is give the board a mid search report that lets them know mostly about our recruiting and some of the steps along the way in the process. Mark is going to present the report, the board has a copy of it. And I'm not sure if you want that on the screen or if he's going to present verbally, but Mark, you want to go ahead?
Sure, sure. So you have a copy in front of you there. So I'll just, I know you can read, so I don't want to be condescending here, but I do know that the public might want to hear this information. So a month from today, on February 25th, the position closes. Your superintendent search closes. And we normally see a lot of applications come in right at the last minute. We often compare applicants to middle school students. They always wait till the last minute to get their assignments in. And that often happens with applicants. So I wouldn't be too alarmed right now that we don't have many applications in. That being said, we haven't seen any come in yet. We've got a number of people that have committed to us verbally that they will be applying. The next four weeks, I'm sure there will be quite a few more come in as a come in, we certainly can update if the board would want through the board president, maybe how many applications have come in if you're concerned about that. But the applications do come into Northwest Leadership to Wayne and myself. It's all confidential. It's all confidential until the board decides who they want to choose as semifinalists, usually five or six, and then the names are made public. So the application, this report does not give any names. It's simply how many we've contacted. Right now, we've contacted 85 and sent applications to 85. So when we talked about targeted recruiting, that was what we did after we last met, after we had the brochure that was released over 3,500 people across the nation. We've personally contacted 85 people and they personally have an application in your brochure. So that's a good number. That's as high a number as we we've had in any search. So out of those 85, just to break it down, 22 of those 85 are current Washington State superintendents, the currently superintendents of districts. Some is about the same size, some a little smaller, some in Western Washington, some in Eastern Washington, kind of across the board. For the out of state superintendents, we have pretty large number. We have 13 that have applied, three from Oregon.
They haven't applied.
Yes, yes. No, they got applications, sorry, sorry. Thanks for correcting. They've got applications, the 13, three from Oregon, one from Iowa, one from Minnesota, two from Michigan, one from Montana, one from Utah. And two, and another one from Dubai and in the Arab Emirates. Former superintendents, we have one former superintendent that has an application, that person is from Washington State. The large number is the current Washington State Assistant Superintendent and Directors. We have sent out 37 applications to that group of people. The out of state Assistant Superintendents and Directors, there's nine, two from California, one from Georgia, one from Florida, one from Texas, one from Connecticut, one from Oregon, one from Colombia, Bogota, Colombia, and one from Kuala Lumpur in Malaysia. So nine out of state Assistant Superintendent's Directors. Principals, we only have two, both of those are from Washington State. Breaking it down by gender, out of the 85, we have actually 23 that are female and 62 that are male, which is pretty normal breakdown for what we we do on our searches. It's about a two to one or a little bit more than that male over female. Out of those 85, 27 of them have their doctorate, currently have their doctorate degree. Out of those 85, 13 are minority people of color, people from different races and different countries, may have origins, maybe Native American, maybe Hispanic, maybe African American. There's a wide variety of minorities that we have contacted and reached out to. The real positive is that you have 325 responses to your English version of your online survey, but none to the Spanish version. So we'd like to recommend that that the district really get out and push particularly to your Latinx Hispanic population to respond to the survey. The survey is in Spanish and hopefully we'll get some responses over the next month. 325 is a good number. We've had up to 800 in a district before, but it would be good to get more for the board to take a look at. That'll close about a week before the 25th, about the 18th of February. So in a nutshell, that's a breakdown of who we contacted, how many are out there, what the breakdown they are, what their current roles are, what their gender is and in race and all that. So are there any questions on this? Is this, hopefully this makes sense to you.
Melinda?
Can't hear.
Maybe somebody can repeat the question.
So you or are they from you? When you send an application, you send it to anybody who talks to you or be ready to ask for it?
Melinda, we didn't hear the first part of your question. Could you repeat it, please?
It's not working.
It's not working, maybe.
Maybe a Mark or Kevin.
Kevin or Mark, can you repeat what she asked?
Okay. Oh, we, the chat was turned off. Um. So it's, it says the microphone, the microphone's just lit up when I plugged in unplugged, so try again. Okay, um, hold on just a minute. Try, try now.
Okay, you can hear me now, right? Okay, perfect. So, so the question, you had 84 inquiries and you had 84 applications sent. My question is, those inquiries, how many of them approached you? And how many did you approach them? And then second, on the application sent, since you had 100% of the inquiries get an application, how many of them asked for the application? And how many of them were just sent it because you talked to them?
Good question. I think to be, I'm being conservative here, but I think that we probably had 25 to 30 people that reached out to us. The rest of those would be us reaching out to them. So there is a crossover because a lot of the people that reached out to us, we would have reached out to them anyhow, but they kind of beat us to the punch. But that's, that's, that's a pretty reasonable breakdown of what we, what we have for your district. I, your, your district is seen as a good job. It really is. The questions people have, we talked about before, is, you know, what's the board like, what's the financial situation in the district? I know you have a levy coming up, that, that'll play, I, people might be waiting to see how you do on your levy too, that you'll have to. We'll just have to wait and see, yeah.
And our, our, our company just sent out a, in the last couple of days, it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week, sent out a, another broadcast on our distribution list, listing all of the searches that our company is doing. And I think today we received an inquiry, not one that we knew about, from a person in Idaho. That's the difference between the 84 on your written report and Mark's verbal report of 85. And I think that person might have picked it up off of that broadcast. The other thing we're going to do, as soon as your board does your reorganization tonight, we're going to redo the vacancy announcement and update the listing of the board. And then Mark and I are going to send out another reminder with the vacancy announcement and another application form to either some people that are, that we haven't heard back from or are just anybody else that's kind of come to our attention along the way. So we'll continue to recruit right up until the 11th hour and, and we'll get more, we'll get more applicants.
Thank you.
Mark and Wayne, for the sake of public record, do you mind just kind of repeating what I'm talking about, an executive session as in regards to the number of applicant or the number of openings there are this year versus last year?
Okay. This is from Joelani, who's the executive director of the Washington State Association of School Administrators, which is what the superintendents belong to. But this time last year that in our state, there were 30 openings. Right now, there are 60 superintendent openings. And that includes, there, there's three, what is there, three or four ESDs in there and, and, but there, there are a lot of openings right now. A lot of superintendents are retiring. Some are simply walking off the job. It's a tough time to be a superintendent. And certainly that's why districts really have to put their best foot forward when we go out to recruit, when they, they take a look at what's on your website, what you have in there, and, and then they do their research. And, and that may be the reason why we're a little slow getting applications in. I think there, there's a number of factors, probably not one by itself, but there are a lot of openings right now, there are.
We, we never have more than two or three, maybe half a dozen at most at the mid search report. So the fact that you're sitting on zero right now is not that big a deal. Feels like it, but it isn't.
Other questions? Thank you, guys, certainly.
Maybe just one, one more thing, Kevin, one more thing in closing. I'd like to commend Selena and Mark D. and, and Jackson for the work that they've been doing. Your website is strong and solid and maybe let the audience know that the website is a place to go for information about the superintendent search. The link to the survey is there, the timeline is there, and the vacancy announcement, I believe, is there. And pretty soon it'll be an updated vacancy announcement after the board reorganization. So district's doing, doing a nice job of supporting the process and we'll just keep it moving. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we continue on the timeline, like they said, the application deadline is the 25th of next month. And then after that, we'll, they'll review, vet those applications, get a report back to us, and then we'll have a meeting where we go through them with their assistance to select our candidates for interviews and follow through. So certainly to those out in the watching, either online or those in studio audience, definitely encourage people to fill out that survey. That's where we get the input as far as what people are looking for. And so appreciate anyone's input in those grounds. Hey, any other comments in regards to the superintendent search? So that takes us then to item 4.0, 4.01 of our meeting, receiving public comment. Public comment is a time for members of the audience to share with us what's on their mind regarding what's happening in the district. And this is a time when the board listens to what the speaker has to say. It is not a time where we engage in conversation related to the speaker's comments. There are two reasons for this. One is related to rules, conduct, related to open up meetings dictate that items discussed be placed on the agenda prior to your meeting. Secondly, we are likely not prepared to discuss the topics presented by the speakers. Rather than misrepresent the facts and misspeak, we withhold comments at this time. This is by no means indicates our lack of interest or concern related to these items. The board may clarify the speaker's comments and typically will designate someone, most often the superintendent, to address the speaker's comments in future time. Many of the topics brought to our attention at this meeting are addressed on the website or through other means. So the one requirement that we have for those wishing to sign or to speak is that they sign up with Jackson and, and each speaker will be given three minutes to share their thoughts. For those that are less inclined to speak in front of a group, there are contact information is available online. And you're certainly more than welcome to send us an email, give us a call, whichever assets into your preferences. So with that, I actually have a list. I do. Very much. So, and Kelly, are you my timer?
Okay, thank you.
So first person that got on here is Candace Wilson. This first letter, okay, so Candace submitted a letter to us last month that asked if it could be read. And now I have to find. Give me one second. Okay. So I am going to skip. And my apologies, sir, but I'm going to skip her lummy introduction because I would totally butcher it. So I'm going to start with the English and Candace, my apologies. Dear Ferndale School Board, first of all, thank you for all your leadership and service for our students and community. Your many hours of work, of hard work, dedication, service does not go unnoticed. With that being said, I commend you for the great work you are doing that is meaningful and valuable to all of us, especially with teaching the truth in our public schools. Since time immemorial curricula is critical for each and every one of us to learn and teach the true, the truth. American history begins with Native history. You have worked hard to do this, to teach the truth with our community, to citizen community, the public, of the significance of treaty day, Native heritage, Native American heritage, man, and the land acknowledgement. This makes a difference for our whole community, amongst the many other things we do for our students, including Native American programs from language leadership. The Ferndale School District has come a long way since I graduated from FHS in 1985. All of this makes a difference for each and everyone in our community. We have come a long way, but have so much more to do. Let's talk about differences in an open den, the progress of recruiting and diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator speaks volumes to the good work in recognition that our differences make. And our differences make, will make a difference. As the elders always remind us, someone is always watching, be, be the example. Thank you for being an example. I look forward to witness what you do next. I will stay tuned. Candace Wilson. Next on my list, I have Suzanne Gray.
And first, I wanted to thank you all for working so hard and diligently to do what is best for kids in the community. You're in very hard care. So thank you for all of that work. And today I'm here to show my support and our support as a community for the leadership that this district has taken in diversity, equity and inclusion work regionally. Few examples, last year, when Ferndale School District declared January 22nd Treaty Day in the schools, partnered with Children for the Setting Sun Productions to make and publicly share a film, was the first time I myself, as an adult, took time to read the Treaty of Point Elliott. While I have lived in Washington State nearly my entire life, I have not ever taken the time, nor have been asked to read the text of the treaties. As a citizen of the United States, I have an obligation to uphold these treaties, as I do with the U.S. Constitution and other historical agreements that are so often cited. I'm thankful for the leadership of this district for providing the people who live in present day Watcom County this important learning opportunity. Miss Appiano, in your summer school board meeting, you expressed concern about the lofty educational expectations of the since time immemorial curriculum. The standard, as a reminder, is students should be able to recognize landmark court cases that affect tribal sovereignty by the end of high school. And you were concerned that that, an ordinary average high school kid couldn't recognize or cite an important court case. And this is just a small story for you. In October, my family was buying gas at the Lummy Bay Market on reservation. And from the backseat of my car, my son, who was a third grader, states, did you know that the Lummy were arrested for fishing in their own waters? Right here, up until the bold decision, they were arrested. I whipped my head around, it's not often that third graders talk about treaty rights and court cases. How do you know that? I asked him, oh, I learned it in class, we're learning all about it. I am proud to be raising a son who knows more about the laws and the treaty and the history of this land than I ever learned. Let us not limit our children to our own understanding. Additionally, I wanted to thank this board and the superintendent for auditing the use of since time immemorial in the Ferndale Schools. This type of transparency and leadership on behalf of Ferndale will help all students and teachers regionally. So thank you for doing that work. I know it was hard for the teachers to do that and the superintendent to get that report together, but it was important. Thank you so much, appreciate.
Thank you, Suzanne. On our list tonight is Tammy Alhundra.
I'm going to have to talk back. My name is Tammy Best Alhundra. I have taught at Eagle Ridge since 1996 and continue to love teaching second grade there. I've been listening in on our board meetings and hearing perspectives of people not in classrooms every day. So today I thought I would share my firsthand account of what's happening in our schools right now, or at least my classroom. Some comments will lead you to believe our students are miserable in masks. What I observe, however, is students laughing, smiling, talking a lot, engaging in learning and playing, just like our pre mask phase. Yes, they need occasional reminders to wear them properly when a mask creeps under their little noses. Usually it just attached to my nose and they adjust quickly and carry on. One little kindergartner, I don't even know, I saw her in the hallway after recess and her mask was down around her neck. And I just went like this and her eyes twinkled and she lifted her mask and all the same. So, um, the next thing I want to talk about was CRT. Now within our district is teaching a law school, theory class, my knowledge, we are reading a lot of amazing books. As a teacher, I want these books to be windows and mirrors. Windows, we look through to see the lives of others in our community and the world, and mirrors, we look in to see our own selves. I hope all of my students see themselves in at least one of my books. So I need a diverse library. That's what educators are talking about when we talk about inclusion. The only thing that comes even remotely close to our discussing race or inequality are some of the stories I read on those topics. Each morning we recite the pledge of allegiance, with liberty and justice for all. What is justice? How do you explain that word to a seven year old? As a teacher, I know the best strategy for developing vocabulary is to use examples and non-examples. There is a brief section in our new reading curriculum that has several titles on injustice that I read aloud and discuss with my class. They're completely engaged by them and I love to hear their thoughts on the events and stories such as separate is never equal, catching the moon and teammates. What I've never seen a child do is feel badly because they're white, ever. They only see the examples of injustice. They can't imagine people being treated that way, much less considering treating people that way themselves. For those upset about these stories being read because they're potentially treading on the heels of CRT, I'd like to remind everyone that part of the curriculum adoption process is public viewing and commentary before the board adopts the curriculum. And last year, when we adopted this curriculum, eight people showed up. In fact, some of them were teachers. In the 25 years I've been teaching in this district, I've only ever had two people ever come and talk to me about what I was teaching. Um, so it makes me wonder, these meetings, do people want to be involved? Or do they want to be mad? Another reason I know that this isn't making our students feel bad is that our students, if they were miserable, they would not be excelling. And right now, we've been about halfway through the school years. One would expect my students to be making about a happy years of growth. More than half of my kids have made over a year growth already. Their kids are not miserable, the kids are fine, actually they're thriving. And they made you this cute poster for school board appreciation.
Tell your students, thank you very much.
Hi.
All the little faces on there. Okay, next up tonight is Jessica Floyd.
Before any further comments, I again just want to acknowledge the extraordinary challenges that the entire educational community is being faced with right now. This is a season of unprecedented adjustments and challenges and Ferndale School District has gone to great lengths to press into important work in diversity, equity and inclusion through all of that. This is a testament to the commitment and character displayed by staff at both the administrative and classroom level in honoring and valuing all students and families. I have a great deal of personal respect and admiration for the work that you all are doing. My family and I have been deeply impacted by the land acknowledgement video produced in partnership with Children of the Setting Sun Productions. Such an in-depth exploration of our land's history and present is incredibly important as we raise our kids to both understand and work to repair historical and ongoing injustices enacted upon our neighbors from the Lummy Nation. At ages four and six, my own children are learning to respect and value the cultural, relational, historical and environmental wisdom of the Lummy tribe. We greatly appreciate the school district's prioritization of creating space for both indigenous and non-indigenous students. We greatly appreciate the school district's prioritization of creating space for both indigenous and non indigenous students. To have a deeper appreciation and understanding of Lummy culture, language, tradition and ongoing presence in our community. Sharing these resources with the larger community enables the conversation to happen at a broader level, and I have seen the the land acknowledgement video do just that. I have shared it with other administrators outside of Watcom County who are starting conversations with their school communities about how to do similar relational. Tangible and collaborative work with local tribes. What a powerful example to set of land acknowledgement work that goes beyond just words. The district's celebration of treaty day, offering of Lummy language classes, support of clubs such as Chesquin, Mekka and QSA that support students in fostering and celebrating their cultural identities. Are all ways that Ferndale School District is creating opportunities for our kids to grow in compassion, depth, wisdom and courage. I deeply appreciate that the district has also put in action to stated values by hiring Native American migrant and Latinx liaisons who are doing incredible work engaging with students and families. Our hope is that our children will be raised in an educational environment where indigenous culture is not treated as a relic of the past. But is honored and respected as a vital part of our collective present and future. Our hope is that our children would learn difficult historical truths that we did not learn as young people. And that these truths would help build into them a deeper appreciation of the importance of telling a different story in our own community. Our hope is that they would not see the elevation of cultures other than our own as threatening, but that we would take an expansive view of humanity. That allows space for all voices to be heard and honored and valued. Thank you for all you are doing to move our community forward together. And we sincerely hope that Ferndale continues to inspire other districts in the county and state to take similar action for the sake of all students. We hope that as the work continues, you will prioritize refilling the EDI director position. To ensure that staff and students are receiving consistent, ongoing and meaningful support both inside and outside of the classroom.
Thank you Jessica. Next tonight, we have Nancy Button.
I'm Nancy Button. I retired last June after teaching for twenty years in Ferndale School District. Last year I had an adorable ten year old child in my fifth grade class. She decided to identify as transgender. I was told by my principal to refer to my students by her new chosen name and use the pronouns he, him. Despite my personal beliefs, I complied. I have many problems with affirming the chosen gender of a ten year old child. First, parents are intentionally kept in the dark about their child's transgenderism at school. Second is the unquestioning support these children receive. Research shows that the phenomenon of rapid onset gender dysphoria in adolescent girls has never happened historically. And is now spreading quickly. The commonality of young girls deciding to become boys is the amount of time they spend on social media. Watching transgender influencers. Third, the adoption of procedures for gender inclusive schools is top down. It comes from the state. It is just one part of critical theory that has overtaken our schools with its divisive ideology implemented through diversity, equity and inclusion. That ideology separates gender from biological sex and changes language to influence thinking. My first concern is lying to parents. Even when my transgender students. They emailed me to ask for a letter of recommendation for their daughter to attend a private school. I was told not to tell them the truth. Before writing my letter, I asked the parents. What they would like me to address. They replied, quote, they need a certificate of good moral conduct, how she is in class and personality, unquote. I wrote that letter of recommendation and lost sleep over my lies of omission. I did not include the child's transgenderism. Daily visits to the counselor nor her use of the boys bathroom. Lying to parents is codified in OSPI's policy. It states, quote. School employees should not disclose a student's transgender or gender expansive status to others, including the student's parents and or other school personnel. Unless the school is one legally required to do so or two, the student is authorized such disclosure, unquote. I don't know about you, but I believe parents have the right to know what their child is doing in school. True gender dysphoria does exist, but it is exceedingly rare. I think automatically affirming a child's claim to of being transgender is highly problematic. Especially in a state of Washington, which allows gender affirming therapies without parental consent at the age of thirteen. Already many girls have gone down this road, receiving only affirmation by adults. And have regretted the irreversible damage of their adolescent decisions. The policies of diversity, equity and inclusion destroy the trust parents have when they send their kids to school. I implore you to educate yourselves about how critical race theory and DEI undermine our children, family, culture and country.
Thank you Nancy.
You're welcome. Would you like my words?
My principal, the counselor and parents with the name crossed out.
Next, we have Anya Milton.
Good evening friends. Many of you know me. My name is Anya Milton. I'm the executive director of the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce. I have two children in the district. One in the community transitions program. She graduated last year from high school. And one is a sophomore. Today I'm coming to read the resolution that the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce passed in support of the levy and this passed unanimously. And I wanted to share with the public. That the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, which is separate from the Ferndale School District, Ferndale District School Board. Endorses the Ferndale School District Operations Replacement Levy currently before district voters. The board believes that when businesses can find and retain the right people to innovate, compete and grow. And when people. Have the skills and opportunities to put their talent to work, no limit to what they can at all achieve. Alive with the US Chamber of Commerce, the board of the board champions high standards, accountability for academic achievement of all children. And choices for students and families. The board recognizes that the past two years in particular have been challenging to all members of the community. However, we must support all students and their pathways to success as we build back better in the years to come. Approximately ninety nine percent of students in Washington State are supported by local levies. A failure of the Operations Replacement Levy would result in Ferndale students falling into the bottom one percent. This is an untenable outcome with significant consequences to their teachers. And the long term economic development of Ferndale. The board believes that voting to approve the Operations Replacement Levy will continue to provide the funding needed to support special education. Advanced learning, reduced class size and an eight period high school schedule, which allows for more elective classes. It also provides technology for both school and at home learning, as well as the opportunity for students to participate in athletics, music, drama and extracurricular activities. When citizens, business leaders and government officials work together, America works. There are greater opportunities for better jobs and new industries. Communities thrive, economies grow. The future we want for every child is the opportunity for them to be the best version of themselves. Let's continue to fund our schools so that Ferndale is the best place to live, work and do business for generations to come. This was approved on January fifth of twenty twenty two.
Thank you Anya. Next is Erin Gunter.
Everybody, I am on the Ferndale City Council, position number three, and I just want to read to. This local, this. Resolution we just passed. The Ferndale City Council strongly endorses the Ferndale School District Operations Replacement Levy currently before district voters. The city council is separate from the school district, but we believe voicing support for Ferndale schools is essential to sustaining the city as we know it. We recognize that the past two years have been challenging, which is reflected in the continuation of the levy at its current rate of one dollar and fifty cents per thousand dollar assessed value. The levy continues the reduction from the previous twenty twenty rate of two dollars and seventeen. Two dollars and seventeen cents per thousand assessed value. If approved by the voters, this levy rate will continue to be the lowest total levy rate in Watcom County. Since approximately ninety nine percent of students in Washington are supported by a local levy. A levy failure would result in Ferndale students falling into the bottom one percent statewide. This is an untenable outcome and will result in significant harm to students and our community. Voting to approve the replacement levy will continue to provide funding for the educational programs and operations. Which we are not fully or which we are not funded or fully funded by the state. The levy supports much needed support staff, nurses, counselors, parent educators, extracurricular activities, special education and so much more. Ferndale students benefit intellectually, emotionally and physically when these are funded. We have a proud history in sports, the arts and education. Let's continue to fund these activities that make Ferndale special. As a diverse and non partisan city council, we ask that all Ferndale voters approve the Ferndale School District Replacement. Ferndale X students are worth it. We approve this on the eighteenth day of January.
Thank you Erin. Next speaker tonight is Andrew Gustus.
Ferndale voters, you can read the condensed version of the following statement against the levy in the voter's guide included with your ballot. As your assessed value increases, your property tax, your levy tax increases, your taxes go up, your mortgage payments goes up, your rent goes up. And it's not like you can sell off the back fifty feet of your property and pay the increase. Ferndale claims, the district claims, we've tightened our belt, but this budget is the largest ever. While student enrollment has remained consistent and even decreased over the last decade. Ferndale claims, we've made excellent use of our resources, but is that true when firing experienced bus drivers or the or hiring the now disgraced hundred fifty thousand dollar plus a year. Diversity Equity Inclusion Director Barbara Robles, who's only fired when her multi city scam was uncovered by the taxpayers. This district has abandoned the core principles of local control. Ignoring protests of parents and students, the Ferndale has dutifully complied with Olympia's every directive. Like continuing to force our children to wear dehumanizing masks all day despite their demographic being the least vulnerable to COVID. COVID and firing loyal, naturally immune and experienced staff. Tell me Superintendent Divak. Did callously firing our expert bus drivers and support transportation director without a replacement plan, did that help or hurt our students? Board, these loyal bus drivers petitioned you many times at these meetings to intervene and you did nothing except approve their termination. Were you afraid of what Insley and Mike Dahl would do to you if you opposed them? Board, where is your line? If the governor mandated as a condition of attending school in person instructed. Oh, when that 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 max that vaccines were mandated, would you go along with that vaccine mandate? Are you on a record opposing that? And board, as you are well aware, the state continues to strip away parental rights and control. Thirteen year olds in Washington State can now make their own medical decisions. Do you support or oppose onsite on school grounds vaccination without parents consent? After two years of tyranny from the state, from the state and no opposition from the local level, the voters are awake and furious. Take the election three months ago, incumbent board members were handily unseated by the voters. I'm sure many voters voted for the new members. But there are also many who voted against the incumbents because they represent the status quo of compliance with the state. Parents are awake to all the new ways that the education of their children has been co-opted and corrupted. Simple fact is that Ferndale, like all public schools, is progressively teaching all subjects through the lens of critical race theory. Hidden behind the innocuous sounding, social emotional learning and diversity, equity, inclusion frameworks. Even tonight, your superintendent searched this contract to rattle off all the demographic qualities of the applicants, but no mention of qualifications. Later in the agenda tonight, I'm seven point oh two, is there a report dealing with the diversity of the arts program, which says our banned orchestra programs indicate the need to diversify. Their student participation, but made no mention of the musicians talent or merit, only their demographic makeup. Additionally, Washington State OSPI mandated push the comprehensive sex ed curriculum. It is just nasty and disturbing and the material that grooms and sexualizes children. Thanks to COVID, all parents are awake to all this and more. Ferndale lost the recent levy when they broke promises to the voters about the cost. They risk losing another levy now by respecting the state and obeying the state and the illegal dictates from the state over the voices of local parents and taxpayers. The board will say, if we don't follow every order for Olympia, the governor will take our funding. Do you know that for a fact? Because every tax paid here is a tax paid by the taxpayers. The bond paid by the taxpayers, local levy paid by the taxpayers. State levy funds paid by the local taxpayers. It's all our money. Until the district learns to listen to the voters, the same voters who put in two new school board members two months ago. Recommendation is vote no on this level.
Thank you Andrew. Next on tonight's list of speakers, Susan Prosser.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I'm here to voice my concerns also regarding the values and the morals. That we are portraying to our community and to our children with the recent decisions that you made. We just took an oath to that. Flag of the United States to uphold the constitution and to respect and fight for the freedoms of individuals, right? Uh, your recent decisions regarding the firing of the bus drivers, the transportation director, that does not hold uphold that. I don't know what you think that the pledge means, but you're not upholding that, right? And our own school district has policies that forbid discrimination and bullying, but that's exactly what you've done. When you took your action against the bus drivers and all of that. Whatever nonsense comes down from the state. Uh, saying that we need this mandate and that mandate, we have to force people to do that. It's not right. It's not right at all. Peggy, thank you so much for being the only one with a backbone and stand up against everyone else and saying, no, this is not right. Thank you so much. We learned some lessons from the Holocaust that brought about the Nuremberg Code. And this code specifically makes it immoral and unlawful to perform experimental procedures on any human without their knowledge and full consent. Your recent. Actions and decisions regarding the employees trying to force them, bully them, coerce them to do things that they didn't want to do. That not right, not right at all. We consider it prudent to be an independent thinker. We teach our children to question things that do not make sense and or that go against our morals and our ethics. With all the craziness in the world today, do you believe that that these things that I've been talking about, are you upholding these? Are you upholding the constitution? No. Are you upholding the Nuremberg Code? No. Are you including your own policies? No. You're bullying. Withholding things from parents. This transgender stuff, keeping the parents, not telling them things. It's all wrong. You're all parents. How can you not see that that's wrong? It's wrong. I don't care who says it's right. And I don't care how many times they say it's right. It's still wrong. Get a backbone. Stop just going along to get along. It's not right. What in the heck are we teaching our children? Are we teaching them to stand up? At the issues, take a look, be an independent thinker and see, does this make sense? Would I like it if somebody did that to me? Do I want somebody to force me to do something? What are we doing to our souls? We have to answer to almighty God, right? We're all going to be judged. Have you taken notice? Have you taken the time to notice that vaccinated people are getting COVID and they're passing it along? What's up with that? Does that not make sense? Do you know that there's Washington administration codes that prohibits people from restricting the breathing of children? Hello, why do we have mask mandates? If somebody wants to wear a mask, wonderful. I I think that it should be their choice, their parents' choice as a matter of fact. If the parents want them to do that, good. If they want them to wear two masks, fine. But I myself don't like restrictive breathing, you know, I kind of like to breathe. Have you taken the time to talk to professionals such as the doctors, nurses, bus drivers, transportation managers, just to name a few. To understand why they made decisions that they made. And and your bullying tactics and oh, we're just going to fire them and all that sort of stuff. You know, you work for us, right? We need individual freedom. I believe that we have turmoil yet to come and we are counting on you. To stand up to this irony and immoral and unconstitutional decisions. Don't just be part of the problem by going along to get along. It's not right. Stand up. Stand up and do what's right. At least something like that, you'll earn some more of our respect back. Okay, because right now we're not so impressed with... You know, I know a lot of you, and I, I'm just appalled that you can't stand up. It doesn't matter who says do something, you know it's wrong. You know it's wrong.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
So next, tonight we have Dom Phong.
Good evening. Tonight I would like to talk about the debate surrounding the phrase, "Follow the science." Those of us who have read about the Vassin debate have probably heard of the name Dr. Robert Malone. He is a virologist, immunologist, and molecular biologist. He is known to have discovered DNA vaccination and mRNA technology used in the COVID-19 injections. On the eve of the Washington DC march on January 23rd, to protest the mandates, Dr. Malone released a COVID declaration signed by more than 17,000 worldwide doctors and scientists. The document lists three foundational principles, but I'm going to read just the first two because they are directly related to the education environment. First, healthy children should not be subject to forced vaccination. They face negligible risk from COVID, but face potential permanent irreversible risk to their health if vaccinated, including heart, brain, reproductive, and immune system damage. And second, natural immunity denial has prolonged the pandemic and needlessly restricted the lives of COVID-recovered people. Masks, lockdowns, and other restrictions have caused great harm, especially to children, and delayed the virus transition to endemic status. The fact that more than 17,000 doctors and scientists signed a declaration doesn't mean that their points are presumed to be true. Science is not about consensus, but it is a long process that involves vigorous debate, testing, and verification. I just hope that these two principles will make you think and reconsider your COVID policy at the district and do what is right for the children, the parents, and the taxpayers. It is a well-known fact that most school districts in Washington State have used the excuse of, "We are just following orders from the top" to surrender local control to the state because they have been threatened with losing the COVID-related funding. At this point, it has become increasingly clear to me that saying you are following the science actually means you only follow it when it agrees with you. Or, to put it more bluntly, you are following the money, not science. Thank you.
Next, we have Paul Rosser.
While employed with the school district, I kept my thoughts and beliefs to myself. However, after being forced out under duress, watching what's going on, I'm obligated to speak. I'm conflicted with the actions taken by the Ferndale School District and condoned by the school board, and I'm not sure of my support for the letter, it wanes. Because a group of employees took a moral and ethical stand against illegal and unconstitutional mandate, the district railroaded these dedicated and proven employees. As one executive proclaimed, they are no longer qualified. Kind of a Marie Antoinette moment, let them eat cake, you think? To compound the matter, a school board member proclaimed after the decided to let everybody go, "What have we done?" The lack of transparency, as mentioned by the company, the leadership company, who has been recruited to find a superintendent, is another issue of concern that they brought up. The continuous masking requirements of students, something that has been proven not working and proving more damaging to students than the COVID itself. Further, a couple of weeks ago, I saw a piece of paper, a handout for an icebreaker, a survey which asked them about their sexual behavior. It was graphic, really graphic. And frankly, I'm becoming a professional organization to allow it for dissemination. I wonder what the purpose of this survey was. The survey, it definitely was not character building. However, in my mind, it is a shaping and grooming technique for young minds to accept perversion, moral decay, and legitimacy of pedophilia. "We have to get the kids to market early," as quoted from a man in high office. I do not believe the school district is acting in the best interest of the community. After attending these meetings and watching stuff, I really am concerned. I am concerned that we are running down the wrong road. We are running down a road that history shows has a very poor ending. And one day, all of us will wake up and we'll regret that we ran down this road. Action taken should not have happened. And I think both the district and the board are on core ground and are aiding the hammer of tyranny, not serving their community. That's all I have.
Next, we have Jean Rosser.
Cowgirl Scott. Hello, and happy new year, sincerely, everybody. And thank you for your service to the taxpayers and students of the Ferndale School District. In 2020 and 2021, the Ferndale School District leadership was put to an unprecedented test and failed. I dishonor the employees who served this community faithfully and well, with perfect safeties and performance records and can-do attitudes, some for over a decade, by dishonoring these employees with wrongful terminations simply due to their beliefs and discrimination of them individually because of those beliefs. The Ferndale School District failed to uphold the very values and mission of the school district itself. By discriminating against and wrongfully terminating these employees, these well-qualified, proven, dedicated staff, Ferndale School District has demoralized many other valuable staff and students alike. Furthermore, has caused the Ferndale taxpayers greatly and lost time and personnel, effectively throwing away a costly, yet necessary and worthy, long-term investment. Well-qualified, dependable, experienced people who go the distance, and then some are difficult, if not impossible, to replace, particularly in this environment. And they were let go due to blatant discrimination and no other reason. If the school district wishes to elevate its highest potential, to best serve the parents and students of this district, to best honor the taxpayers' investment over time, and to honestly meet the mission that they are obligated to uphold on the community's behalf, particularly regarding character building, for this and future generations, then the school board will invite the transparency necessary to see through the wrongful decisions that were made and regain the public trust by recouping the taxpayers' investment, by restoring the wrongful terminations and the wrongly terminated employees, and instead notify both Mr. Fairburn and Mr. DeBach that regrettably it is they who are no longer qualified for their jobs. As emphasized by the gentleman paid to assist the Ferndale School District when we listened to them the last time around, locate the best talent to assume the superintendent position. This district has a lot of work to do to uphold due process related to transparency in order to regain and honor the public trust and taxpayers' investment. Current leadership has failed. Good luck and Godspeed. And I honestly strongly suggest that everybody read this book that was written by the founder and executive director and chief legal counsel for the children's defense side, Robert F. Kennedy Jr. This is a fabulous book, and it tells the truth.
Thank you, Jean. So next, I have two students from the class of 2020.
This is me coming up again, if you don't mind, folks, because the request to present was on behalf of millennials from the class of 2020 and a friend who wishes to remain anonymous due to peer regret against family, especially younger siblings. I don't have to necessarily do what they ask, but it is a beautiful song, and it's called Silent War, and it is six minutes long. And it was sung at the Defeat the Mandates Protest by a band called Five Times August. The primary singer, it was on guitar. It's a beautiful piece of music to me. It speaks specifically to the class of 2020's reality, and I think it would do everyone well to hear it, but if you'd rather not, we won't do it, but it has been requested. We have it ready to go for the bugger.
I'm thinking what we'll do is, if you want to forward, or if you want to forward this song to Jackson, and then he can forward it to the board, where it does go over the time limit, but that would give us the opportunity to listen to it.
Well, it's from two students, so it's six minutes long, example. But it would be worthy to listen to it, but we can forward. If we have a working capacity to hear it, but before.
Just... Yeah, I mean, and with one of the... One of the requirements, yeah. So I think that's going to be best, because some other requirements typically, public comment is not being anonymous. I can understand those concerns and that way things, we can... Thanks. That is the end of the list I have of public comment. Any other, Jackson, that I don't have? Oh, that's it. Okay. So, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We do appreciate hearing what people are thinking, and we do take that into consideration. Certainly, if there's things that you would like, you know, from what you've heard, or there are other things you'd like to comment to the board, as I mentioned, the onset, our contact information, emails, phone numbers, et cetera, is all available on the website, so welcome to comments. With that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, item 5.01, which is the reorganization of the board. Typically, every December or November, depending on the timing of the meeting, the board does reelect or reappoint the president, vice president. With COVID, we had some delays in things, and at our last meeting, when we were going to do this, we opted to delay it because we didn't have the full board in attendance. We also... Andrew McLaurin was on our board oversight committee, and so we wanted to essentially decide who would serve on the bond oversight committee, as well as the sponsorship task force, and elect our legislative rep for the upcoming season. So, at this time, the board will... Chairman, President will open nominations for president of the board.
I would like to move to elect Kevin Erickson as president of the school board for 2022.
Okay. So, it has been moved to elect Kevin Erickson as president of the school board for 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Did I hear correctly? Okay. Just for clarification purposes, I'm not missing anything, because I can't look both directions at the same time. I'm just going to go around. Jesse, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea, yea.
Right.
Nay? It's me in the casting booth, and I will go, "Okay." So, then I will continue to serve as board president for 2022. At this point, then I will open for nominations for the vice president for the 2022 year. And just one thing that I forgot to mention at the onset, the school board policy does state that newly elected members are not eligible in the first year for being president or vice president, and that's not a... Basically, that's just because there's a steep learning curve, as anyone that's on the board will attest to. And so, at this point, the board policy says it feels it's better. Board has been said this policy in the past few years, that newcomers not on the board that first year, or on president or vice president first year. They certainly are open for the legislative rep and other positions. So, again, going back, the chair is now opening the floor to nominations for vice president.
I'm going to nominate Melinda Cool for vice president.
Okay. It has been moved to nominate Melinda Cool for vice president. And just make this easy, I'll start. All those in favor, raise their hand, and please hold it up until I look. Okay, so it's unanimous. So, congratulations, Melinda. Um... Next, we'll go on to the board oversight committee liaison, and I know Steve and Peggy talked about doing this last time, and we were going to kind of be official about it. I don't know that this isn't exactly an elected position, and certainly anyone can attend those meetings, but if we do have more than two people attend, we do need to then have it as a coping meeting.
Can we discuss the three positions kind of at the same time? Because it might be, if somebody takes one and then thinks, oh, I would have rather done it at the end, just because they all take time.
Sure. And I think by official quote-unquote board policy, the only one that is really an elected, the others are more of a consensus, is the legislative rep. Either Margaret Jackson, correct me if I'm wrong, or... So... But yeah, the floor is open to discussion in regards to those positions, or if anyone wants to throw out.
I might just step up and offer to do the oversight committee.
I would like to suggest, if she's willing, I think with the legislative representative, our session has already started, and there's already been discussion. We've had a planning meeting already. We have this weekend legislative conference. I know that Peggy is... We have this weekend legislative conference. I know that Peggy is. Registered for both of them. I think her. Her interest in state level and general knowledge of how things go. I don't want to throw you under the bus because I haven't talked to you about this before.
I was actually gonna know any of you because I thought you. Okay, questions, sorry. Can we, can I be her understudy? I mean, could we do it that way and just have a backup and that way?
I think we can both do that. And I think the benefit of that too is we both have different perspectives. And I think that way. I think we can work well together and try and see each other's point of view on that.
There there might also be enough legislators. Info and responsibility for two.
Well, and and this year, because usually we do this in June. But given that Kevin was, you know, in president role and the legislations happen and all that, it was kind of like, okay, that's a lot to do. It is a short session and then when it comes to June, we'll choose another one for the following year because there are things to do in the off season, if you want to call it. As well. Can we be co-ledge? That I think.
I think if the way Peggy stated it, where you're in the primary.
And it really is gonna be like this month and next that the session is actually happening. Other than that, it'll just be. And maintaining relationships with our representatives.
Um, I think the big thing is realistically said, I like the co idea, but I don't know that. That WASA is set up to contact people that way, but I think if you guys. You know, work it that way, I think that would be because there is a lot, there's a lot that can be done in that position. And do we have someone interested as far as working with the. Sponsorship task force? I know that's been a big thing on the. Not yet. We are in the process of working with setting up that task force. I know you've got a few things on your plate too, Jesse, so I don't want to.
I do. I probably shouldn't for now. Probably relatively.
I think basically the duties, anyone else can interject. Because the sponsorship task force hasn't totally been set up or met at this point. Basically, it's being the board's liaison and being able to help report back and get information. As we look at what opportunities are there for looking at community sponsorship of. Help cover costs of different things, whether it be. Something big like the turf or the new football stadium to, you know, other ways that we can. Help engage with the community in into this district and partner together to the success of the students.
Yeah, the primary role would be to keep the board informed, the conversation, make sure the task force doesn't get. A field of the board vision for that. Work.
But basically, that liaison to keep information back and, you know. You may be asked for board opinion and so I'll have to talk with them and see. Provides us with an interaction. So then what I'm hearing and as far as.
Would you rather do legislative and I could do sponsorship? Yeah. Because the thing with legislative representative, the way I understand it, is kind of the same sort of thing of just being a liaison. This is what they're talking about. These are the education bills that are going on right now. This is WASA's position. If you wanted to do that, I could do sponsorship. Or we could do the co and you could do sponsorship as well.
Okay, since you have experience with legislative stuff, that'd make more sense.
So, okay, all right, let's keep with the co then and.
So then to keep with stuff. The terror entertain a motion. Since the legislative rep is a official elected type position, terror entertaining motion for that. And and we will by consensus. Steve is our oversight committee liaison and Peggy is our sponsorship. Task force.
Well, I will make a motion for me to be for Melinda Cool to be the legislative representative. Just in case anybody's wondering who we is.
So the it has been moved that Melinda Cool served as our legislative rep. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, then that unanimously passes. So congratulations to everyone. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 6.02, which is the acknowledgement of National School Board Appreciation Month. For those that weren't aware, January is. What's that?
Six point oh one start time of me.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, my apologies. Back to item 6.01, discussing the changing start time of the board meeting. So earlier this month, Mark sent out a note to all of us. In regards to whether or not we wanted to change the start time for our business meetings. They've been at seven o'clock for quite some time, but there was talk of. Moving that to potentially an earlier time. Didn't see any movement for moving it later. So at this point, open for discussion or thoughts or anyone's input. I'm not sure how that affects people as far as their workdays. Some people start early, some people start. Later and so comments or thoughts?
I'm all for starting somewhat earlier just because I work late.
I'm finally starting earlier.
I move to start earlier just for the benefit of the audience and and the students that are here. Running so late is, you know, in fact, I would even. Suggest maybe that we put a timeframe on each. Item that we address in our agenda to kind of curb some of the, you know. Not to, you know, criticize storytelling or whatever, but I mean, to try and, you know. You should have some kind of a end time. On the agenda. And so I like to work towards that. It'll be my opinion.
Hardly. Bye.
So consensus is we'd like to start earlier. Question being what time earlier is? My my thought process is I'm typically scheduled at work until six o'clock, but I can make adjustments with that. I don't know if we're talking six thirty, six o'clock. You know, five thirty, five o'clock.
I would suggest six o'clock would be a good, not to, you know.
Put you in a jam, but.
I I do get up at three o'clock in the morning to go to work, so. It will probably be fine. I'm back in town by four, so.
Peggy thoughts?
I think anywhere between six and six thirty would be good.
I would think six, six thirty is not too much of a difference, but I'm good with whatever.
Jesse?
Six with a meal. I know you're all thinking it, so. We haven't spent our budget on anything else.
There definitely are some pros to that. The worst one is eating on camera. So. That makes it for a little bit, makes it a little tricky and with masks and. So I guess I would, I would venture at least initially, we start with the meeting time and then we consider the other aspects of that at some point. Not a big fan of eating on camera. So.
Can I make a motion then to move to move our starting time to six PM?
So it's been moved to change our starting time of our meeting to six PM. And are there one question for Mark possibly? If don't know that there's any requirements we have other than we just. So we don't have any.
We just changed the time. I think you all got the the message we said that have their districts that have one o'clock in the afternoon meeting, so it's. As long as you advertise it and make it available for for public, you can. Set the time. In fact, I think a consensus, you want to change the meeting time is sufficient or even be before.
We don't need the form of vote. We'll just.
Okay. Try it, see how it goes and move from there.
Then with that advice, if if everyone is in agreement, if there's no extension, we'll start with our February business meeting at six o'clock. Okay, so now we move on to item 6.02, which I. Prematurely advanced to, and that is acknowledgement of National School Board Appreciation Month. For those that aren't aware, January is School Board Appreciation Month. And for this item, I'm going to turn things over to Mark.
Yeah, so on behalf of all the employees of the school district, we would like to say thank you for all the countless hours and and time that you spend and. As volunteers on behalf of us and the. Students and families we serve. So I would like to read the proclamation from the governor. That says, whereas the mission of Washington's public school system. Is to ensure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society. Who enjoy productive and satisfying lives and. Whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards. And nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than one million students, have a combined annual budget of over fifteen billion. And employ approximately 120,000 people. And whereas school directors play a crucial role promoting student learning achievement. By creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors. Are directly accountable to the residents and their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. Whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy. For public schools and the welfare of schoolchildren. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education. Now therefore, I, J. Enslie, governor of the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2022. A school board recognition month. In Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. So we are joining in this special observance. And thank you. And on behalf of the administrators in the school district. Jackson is going to pass around a. Certificate of recognition. Because everybody needs one of those and even better, a voucher for a. New Ferndale logo sweatshirt for pretty of your choice. And redeem at the ISP office at Ferndale High School. Or if you don't, aren't able to make it for the high school, let me know what size you want. We will. We'll pick it up for you.
Thank you. Just as a. Interesting humorous side note to the school bar depreciation month. Earlier this month, I was sitting at home working and doing some stuff, got this phone call and had a gal from. Michigan call me. Didn't know who she was, but she had. Googled the Ferndale School District. And thought she was calling Ferndale, Michigan. Or help me and thank me for being school board member. And we had a, actually had a quite a nice conversation. Since I knew about Ferndale, Michigan through our exchange program and such that. So that was kind of an interesting out of the blue call. Well, thank you very much and thank you to my fellow board members for your service and then for the work that we do. So next item on our agenda, item 6.03, which is a report on the capital bond, capital bonds project. And to that, I will turn things over to.
Yeah, so the February is driven down Vista or Portal lately. You've probably seen the building change colors. So it's turning from yellow to orange, which is actually the. Water barrier that's going up on the on the outside. They're making really good progress. They have poured almost all of the interior slabs at finishing up, just a couple of the mechanical mezzanines. The building is actually really turning, starting to take shape when you go inside and and you can see the framing for the walls and the all the ductwork and the. Electrical outlets, everything are being put in. It's really starting to, starting to take shape. So we'll try to get a tour here, probably in February. Get everybody a chance to go down there and and take a look at it. It's, you can start really seeing it. It's the. The mezzanine's going up in the. Athletic wing, mechanical mezzanine. So it's all, most of the parts of the building now are really, are really taking shape and getting good feel for it. We also got some good news today. We applied for rebates through PUC7 Energy. Through the new equipment and the energy standards and we just received. Word that we're going to be able to put about $60,000 back into the project. Through the PSC rebates. Because of the energy compliant equipment we're buying. And I think I told you before, but just in case, we also were approved for approximately $90,000 through the Washington State Arts Commission. For art for the project. So we'll be able to to get some original art. From the. Hopefully local artists. We've actually approached some folks at. LIBC to help us get hooked up with some local native artists. So hopefully we can get some. Art in the building. There's a process you have to go through to get people certified. To be on the art commission approves list. So we're pursuing that. So. Things are progressing nicely at this point.
So any questions for Mark regarding the. Progression of the bond. The remon or the new high school.
Hey, I got one quick question, Mark. So as as the project goes on and the equipment gets installed and everything. Anybody that's doing any commissioning on the equipment to make sure that it's a sound install, it's easy accessible, we can work on it, we can repair it. So we have some commissioning?
Absolutely. Yeah. In fact, we had last week. We had the kind of the commissioning kickoff meeting.
Okay.
So the fellow that's leading the commissioning team actually came in and walked the contractor and the some of the subs through the process of of commissioning. And we've actually started already on some ducts. And we've actually started already on some ducts testing before things get covered up and, and making sure that we've got seals and everything on all of the ductwork early on in the stages. So we've got them integrated into the project already and working on it. Now, it's a pretty big component actually of, of the project.
So as far as like commissioning of like fans, I, I don't know if there's been involved, you know, direct drive fans or if we've got belt drives and stuff like that. You know, there's vibration issues around that, there's alignment issues, there's belt tensioning. All those kinds of things, are those being looked at as well?
I am pretty sure they are. I don't know the, the details specifics, but I can get you in touch with somebody who can tell you that.
Okay, that'd be great. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then that takes us on to item 6.04, which is a report on the replacement levy. And once again, I'll turn things over to Mark for that report.
Well, so we had a couple of guests that took the, under a most of the update. The ballots are mailed, so everybody got their, got their ballots. We've been receiving quite a few questions around the, what process is involved in, in vetting the foreign against statements? And the answer is none. If they reflect the opinion of the writers and the other basically takes no position on or any responsibility for content. So if anybody reaches out to you and, and asks those questions, that's the answer. And there's been quite a lot of, we've been getting phone calls and inquiries based on content and expressing thoughts about the appropriateness of some of the comments. So anyway, we're, we're happy to help you if any questions you may get about that. February 8 is election day as a reminder for everybody. So make sure you look for your ballots and, and make sure you get those filled out and returned. And we have been honored to receive several endorsements from local governments. The LIBC passed a resolution and endorsed the levy as well as, as you heard from Anya and Eric from the Chamber in the City, they also have. So we've been, we feel pretty fortunate to have the support of our, our partners in the community that have come out in support. Because as you know, we can't advocate one way or the other for the, for the letter. We can just educate, which we are continuing to do through our staff members. And our administrators are making sure people have the information they need to be able to answer questions. So we're very thankful for our, the support of our, of our community.
So it's coming quick. So any questions for Mark regarding the levy?
Just to put a comment, just to remind people that, you know, bonds are for buildings and levies are for the students. So this is all about the students.
I give kudos to for like our website, the Ferndale School District website. I think it's, it's very clear when you go on there where to get the information and it's.
So I'll do Selena, Jackson and.
Really get anywhere on the website without having the option of going to my website.
But it's also very clear, whereas I don't need that right now and getting to my thing too.
It is, it is.
Good.
So. Cool. Well, thank you, Mark, and thank you to the team that's putting that information together. Um, so that brings us on to item 6.05, which is to review the monitoring report for operational expectations policy to, we to the succession plan. And this is a report that the board was given previously and has had some time to read through. And so it's open for discussion, just as a reminder. Will be reviewed and discussing the report this month, and then it will show up on the consent agenda through the summarization of our comments at the next month's meeting. So with that, I will open the floor and any questions or any discussion?
Actually, I have a question. Sure. What is Mark's title, subtitle? I mean, as an employee?
Right now?
Well, or right now, just typical, you know, when he's not, when he's not interim superintendent.
July 1st?
Yeah.
Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services.
Okay, so assistant superintendent. So always, I'm surprised, I use the finance director, but apparently you do not have a finance, as such, you're just. So I guess my, my question was, okay, so assistant superintendent. So, so when you hear succession, it's like automatically that's the role we do is fill if the superintendent was gone and they needed somebody to step in. I guess my question is, the rest of the succession chain, I mean, looking at what you've done in the past, what, you know, Linda recommended in the previous go around, and so this seemed to be annoying with what you had done before. So fine, but I just was curious, in this process, obviously, the other people who are in the succession chain, if you will, all have superintendent qualifications. I mean certifications that they need in order to do this job. I just was wondering, if in the process, there's other people that might also be viable candidates to get overlooked by the succession processes set up. Maybe that's a question to ask later. I, I don't mean to put anything out, but just it was a thought that occurred to me this, okay, well, there's this succession. It's root that you, you, you know, designated as, well, you know, if I can't fill them, there's this, these people all on the executive board. But, but, and it lists them by name, but you know, I mean, things change. There may be other people in the organization that are equally qualified or more qualified at some point. And also thinking just about the structure of the organization, being finance, being involved with the finances, that has a tie into everything. Whereas some of the other job titles don't, I just had some questions. Whether that's a good thing to keep doing, going forward, or, and how to bring that up and have a discussion about that.
And I guess that's a conversation with your fellow board members, because this is the, this is your policy. Our, our recommendation, basically, we were trying to update the current policy, which says that if something happens to the normal superintendent, I fill in temporarily until you can find a permanent replacement, which I think is where the other candidates in the organization would step forward to become identified in terms of that other or longer term search. This is a hoop for the gap right now in the interim. I think the, the, the thinking is the four people on the executive team that are basically were collaborating and running the district. And even though we may have a specialty in finance or curriculum or human resources, we are all intertwined and working together on a daily basis. So any of those four people would be capable of, of running the district in the interim. If that makes sense.
And I think from the original discussion, well, can't say original, when we originally put this policy together back when Linda was superintendent, it made the most sense from the administrators we had at that time. And it's sort of documented in there that Mark made the most sense just because the finance and the business operations are the places, as it says, that you can get into trouble the most quickly. And because of their overarching impact on those other areas, it probably had the most knowledge of what was going on throughout the district. Although I think one of the things that I put down as commendation for this whole report was that philosophy of, I was gonna say, first among equals philosophy of just working all together. And I think that's one of the things that, that really seemed to be instilled in my mind during Linda's tenure and has continued on is the administration of the team. Now, there's, there's a bit of a hierarchy, but at the same time, they all work together and it's not a competitive hierarchy, it's a collaborative hierarchy. So my thought process with it is that if, you know, should something happen to Mark, it's going to be a group that steps up, you know, somebody will have to be named, somebody's got to be at the head of the document because as we'll prove later on in our, in our, in part of the consent agenda is we've, somebody's got to be able to have the official title to sign paperwork on behalf of the district. But there, there's been a real collaborative, been working together, you know, and who's got, who's got the best knowledge based on those where decisions to make, you know, they come to the forefront. It's a little bit weird when you're dealing with an interim, looking at a succession plan for an interim superintendent type situation, you know, recently.
This was just part of his job description to assume this role anyway. It was not, that there was not a success, I mean, you know. So I, I'm still unclear as to the organization of the, of the whole structure and as to who's, you know. When you have the succession chain, it's like, you know, what is your actual job description? What's their actual job description now is all fit together. So, but that's something I just can, actually, for the person that I would want to talk to about that because you would know every job description of everybody. And I think would also be helpful to public just to have, you know, an organizational structure so they know if they had a question. Oh, who do you go to to ask a question about this, you know? Like the person that was asking the question about the bus incident, you know, it was like, okay, well, I don't know if I'm going to the right place, but you know, people directed it to the right place, but I think might be, you know, it might be a clearer way of putting that out there so that people would know automatically that I have to even, anyway, just a thought.
No, good thought, because it'd be also helpful for new board members and even sometimes older board members, if you get these looks here. You know, I got this question about XYZ, you know, who to direct them to. You know, sometimes it's easy, if it's a personnel thing, if it's a curriculum thing. But, okay, there was an issue, my student had an issue with the lunch lady. I'm not sure who, you know, to direct it to, and, you know, maybe not that fine tuned, but, you know, some supervise, some areas to help people know where to go or contact.
Well, the, the easy correct answer is always the superintendent. So that if, if we don't have a real complicated organizational structure, it's, it's not going to take too many steps to get to the right person from there.
When in doubt, it's never wrong to write the question to Mark, superintendent at that time.
And actually preferable to do that, too, because you don't, if you go to the wrong person or you put it in such a way that it's intimidating or puts off to the person that you said, oh, hey, this person, it's a friend of mine, they had a problem with the lunch lady and they might interpret it like, hey.
I appreciate you saying that. And if it's not one of the four of us, then absolutely it needs to come to the superintendent, whether it's me or the, the permanent superintendent, because that's, it's, you guys are scary. And I know you don't think you are, but as board members, your position makes you scary, people in the organization, so.
The other comments you're. Support a little more straightforward or a little less going on with it than. See no other comments? If people can get their cover sheets to me. Did we, I know we talked about last time and I'm not sure where things are. But one of the things I was noticing when we were, when I was putting together the summary, it particularly when there's like, with one of the reports, there were 30 some compliant, non-compliant, partially compliant. It was like the summation of that kind of made for weird numbers, and so we talked about each indicator have its own line, so I could put the summation of it so we could have that. I don't know, Jackson, if we had a chance to get that kind of a form together or if people have their whole report and can give it to me. Thankfully, on these two reports that we've got tonight, there aren't a whole lot of indicators that as far as if we get future cover sheets, and I can certainly coordinate with, with Mark and Jackson to get some come together that way. So we get a better sum, summation for that consensus.
Like the tally sheet?
Like the tally sheet for each.
Of us to keep track of.
Yeah, just, just because otherwise it's like, well, you may think this one's partially compliant and I may think this one's partially compliant and we composite it all into one partially compliant on it. It's hard to know what areas, it doesn't get an indication of what areas we think are compliant and which are non and partially. So it'd be nice to have a tally on each indicator. Okay. So for that, if you do just give me the cover sheet, if you could, if you have anything that is partially compliant or non-compliant, if you could just indicate that on those. Okay. Um, so with that, we'll move on to item 6.06, which is to receive the F-196 financial report. This is one of Mark's favorite and full of lots of information. As Mark and Wayne indicated to us in our executive session, it's the report that goes to OSBI that allows them to put all kinds of financial data about the district and other districts on to the website for people to view. So I don't know, Mark, if you have any introductory words or if this report speaks for itself, then if that be the case, then Mark is open to questions.
Yeah, I, it, the, just information. So the F-195 is the budget, and we spent a lot of time going through the process of developing it, talking about it and putting that into, into life. This is the kind of the recap of last year's budget, this is how it actually turned out. So we planned it in the F-195, and then this is the report on what actually happened. So it's, it's basically just shared for reference, for information. It's not particularly thrilling reading. We refer to it quite a bit just for information's sake, but just to kind of bring it back both circles since we spent so much time on, on developing the budget. It seems very incomplete not to give you the F-196 as well, so. A natural closure.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On page, I think it's page, yeah, page six of 86. Um, we've got at the top revenues, local, state, federal and other. And so the total for general fund, which is the bulk of our budget, and our total revenues were 68.76 million. The federal was 5.6 million, and that included S R 1 and S R 2?
No.
What did it include for?
That was cares. And this is maybe part of S R 1. But not much, I don't believe.
And then my other question, because I had a question from a Ferndale School District voter, constituent, what have you. And they were under the assumption that the, the money that would be withheld from school districts was the S R money.
No.
But the money that would be withheld, and I told this person that my decision came before any mandate. The way that I personally vote, whoever wants to listen to it can listen to it. The way that I personally vote comes before the mandate came. I don't like the mandates, but anyway. The money that would be withheld would be that 52.7 million.
Right. Yes, and so the, the, there was some confusion on this.
Yeah, so to completely say, let's just do our own thing, Ferndale. We're following the money, that's 70 some odd percent. We're following the money. That's seventy-some odd percent of our budget.
We'd be insolvent in a month, maybe two, but no more than two months and we'd be probably taken over by the state. So because the, the, the S R money, the federal COVID relief money is coming from the feds and that is not under the control of the state. They're basically just brokering it out to the districts. Our actual state apportionment, which is the bulk of our revenue, or if you pointed out, that is the bulk of the budget. That is what the, uh, the superintendent of public instruction actually can withhold from us. We're not complying with the state. And that's, I actually, um, inquired to find out if any districts had actually, um, had their proportional withholding. Um, and even though several of them had initially said, we're not going to follow mandates, when, um, uh, OSBI, uh, uh, Bragg Dahl sent them a letter that said, if you do not comply, we are going to withhold your state apportionment. Every one of them started implementing the mandates. Because there is not a district in the state that can operate without the state apportionment.
And what happens when, if you did say, sorry, we're not following mandates and they withhold the apportionment and then you're insolvent and, and the state takes over? Would you have to follow the mandates then?
I would assume the state would think this is following their own mandates if they're running the school district.
You would think so.
You would think so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, seventy percent of your budget is, you know.
My household was out seventy-seven percent of my budget.
Yeah, none of, nobody would be doing very good without that amount of their budget. And, you know, I, I would echo what Melinda says is I don't like mandates any more than anybody else does, but our hands are tied and, and I appreciate people telling us their opinions. But I think that our rich, our legislators are the ones that really need to hear because they're the ones that have the power to change those mandates.
Well, that's important fifty of, of federal.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that federal money is a small portion compared to the local and the state.
Oh, so four hundred and fifty thousand of the five point six nine, so only a tiny bit.
Yeah.
So this coming year, that's
Over the next two years. Yeah, yeah. That's a page twenty-six.
Oh, I didn't get that part. Six of eighty-six.
There's, it's, there is a wealth of information.
The scary part is that Mark knows so many of those numbers. Actually, it's not scary. It's a good thing, but there, it, there is some, you know, having gone through it, that there's a lot of information there. Cool. Any other questions for Mark on F one ninety-six? Next item then on our agenda is item six point zero seven, which, um, is a discussion of allowing student advisory vote. Um, and Mark and I talked a little bit about this and, um, we had talked, it had been brought up at the last meeting and kind of there had been some conversation about it. The WASTA conference and such, and we were just kind of trying to figure out what is that? How does that exactly work? And, uh, Mark is going to try to get some input from WASTA, um, just in the sense of when we have a resolution on there or the consent agenda, does that mean we ask the students to vote? Or vote before we vote, or how do other districts do that? Um, and how are the logistics? So were you able to find out anything?
No, so, um, I asked Faye to help. I had spoken to a couple of districts and they were not doing advisory votes. That's how they had some student school board members, but hadn't gotten to that point. Uh, so I asked Faye to, to help out, see if she could, um, uh, gather a little bit more information and Faye found out exactly the same. There, we, we were not able to locate anybody that was actually doing it. Um, so we don't have any good information at this point to say, this is what it looks like in this place. This is what it looks like now. So we can continue to research and, and see if we can find something.
The thing, the person that I talked to, and I cannot remember what school district they were from. It was a, um, like similar to anytime we're going to vote on something where like we're five point oh one, wherever you voted. Um, where it says, Dr. Erickson will open nominations, he'll get a motion and then we'll vote and that's on the agenda. On their agenda, the point before it was, we will poll the student school board members on the effect this would have on students. So it was like one more line in the agenda. So they do that before there was before the vote had happened. And then another different person who was in the same conversation was like, oh, we don't have anything like that on our, on our agenda, but because you can discuss whatever you want. She's like, I just make a point to ask them what they think because any school board member can do that.
And, and that was one of the questions I posed to Mark when we were having discussions and said, how does that differ from asking, you know, when there's only two of them or, you know, we, for instance, you know, hopefully Kong wouldn't be outvoted tonight and whatever he voted if he had him vote. Um, but how, I think, you know, it, how does that differ from just asking, what do you guys think about this?
Really?
Yeah.
It was just the whole discussion of it was just to make sure you've got student school board members, make sure you have them.
Yes.
What do you think of this? That's what I got from it, but it do get from it.
Um, right. Right now, one of the things that I saw was that on our school websites, um, it felt, uh, in addition to students, high school students serving on the school board, the role of the student school board members, the by student perspective in decision process at the school board level, they sit at the school, uh, at the board table in all meetings, participate in discussions with other board members and exercise non-binary advisory votes on matters brought before the board. So.
And that's on our website?
Yes.
That's on our website. It seems like we should be.
It's just that, the thing is like, it's very vague in like the wording because we as a student, we don't know what topic we're supposed to be voting on. Is it policies? Is it a topic? Um, so, and I've also talked with the WASTA about this because I've been working with them for, um, a few weeks now on recommendations that will be happening on the Hill Conference. So, um, hopefully there'll be more information then, but right now I'm not really sure of like, what like the structure is for that.
I mean, I think it, it's a good reminder that at minimum we want to be, um, soliciting their input. Um, and I think it probably depends a little bit on school board or student, school, student, school board members, if I say that the right word. Um, you know, some are more outspoken and particularly after they've been on the board for a while as opposed to when you're first on it, it's like, you know, when you're not, um, but I think like you mentioned, Melinda, asking, what do you think if, if we aren't hearing that voice to see how it impacts? Because certain topics are going to be more, um, there's going to be more input than others, you know. I think we have to remember that voice.
When you go on agenda item details, like onboard docs and click on each of them, there's a type for each of them. And if it's type says action, that is something we're going to be voting on. If the type says discussion, it might be something that we just talked about for a while. We kind of come to a consensus about, but we won't actually be voting on. But even still, discussion is something that I would hope you would feel comfortable in putting forward your opinion on it with that. But the ones that are action are those things that we'll vote.
Any other thoughts or comments? Writing that at this point.
My last comment on it, is I think that because pretty soon, none of us will have a child in the school district. That's even more important. I barely have a child in the school district. I mean, he's got to go with his feet out the door to go right now. So it's just really important to have.
Yeah. But it's important to have the perspective of how the decisions we make impact. As you say, when we have students within the district based on what's happening and we have that direct interaction and we don't. Definitely important to be asking input and, you know, and again, put in the power, you don't feel intimidated to speak your mind. Um, and I guess as we go through and we talk to other board members from other districts, you know, listening for good ideas of how maybe we can enhance that or improve things that way. And so that takes us then on to, um, item seven, the focus on students. First item under that portion of the agenda is item seven point zero one, which is to receive, receive the monitoring report results policy one, R dash one, the mission. And this, I'm going to turn it over to Faye.
Thank you. So, um, you have all one, um, in front of you and online. Have any questions right now? I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll be up for discussion next month.
Okay, so again, just as a refreshing reminder, everyone won't keep doing this, I promise, but, um, with these reports, we get them one month, they're presented to us. Gives us time to read them for discussion at the following month's meeting and then for final approval on the consent agenda meeting after that. And looking at the, the cover sheet for this one, it looks really straightforward in the sense, total number of improvement goals equals one. So that should be easy to keep track of, saying that we made reasonable progress or didn't make reasonable progress. So, um, and if there's any questions you have as you're reading that, um, prior to next month's discussion, you can direct those to Faye. Okay. That then brings us on to item seven point zero two, which is to discuss the monitoring report for results policy two point six, R two point six, the ARPS. And I will go ahead and open up the floor for discussion and any questions can be directed to Kellie. One question I had, if I can start, is, um, the ARPS classroom-based assessments for the spring of twenty twenty-one. The, the numbers I'm trying to, it's like we had two hundred and thirty-eight fifth graders that were enrolled. And then we get to eighth graders and we only have twenty and we only have forty-five in the whole high school. Is that just in assessments or, you know? I was trying to figure out how exactly those numbers, if I'm reading it right, it's a matter of, we don't have a universal assessment process. I wanted to make sure that my assumption was correct.
Um, I can explain spring of twenty twenty-one a little bit, um, on just like a person. Um, first of all, the impacts of the failed levy in February twenty twenty, we made some significant cuts. Those particularly hit our arts programs, um, at the middle and the high school. Um, so we we reduced starting there, um, we only offered music, um, on a limited capacity and then um, a limited capacity of fine arts at the high school as well as a limited capacity of, of music at the high school. That was a significant impact for us as a result of the levy until we were able to pass it in November twenty twenty. And as you know, we have to go into the school year. We didn't, we didn't know we were going to get it in November. So we have to start the school year, um, with that assumption, making that assumption. The second thing, um, we entered the twenty twenty-one of, yeah, twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year in a remote setting. And we made some decisions at the secondary level where we were trying, we, we listened loud, we heard our community on how many classes we were asking our students to try and stay up with when we were in distance learning in the spring of twenty twenty. Um, so at the middle schools, we made the decision only to offer the limited music that we had, uh, which you will see reflected there in the number of students that participated, um, and then participated in a classroom-based assessment. We did our best in administering classroom-based assessments, but it was really challenging where it, when we were trying to navigate all of the protocols. Our music teachers did a phenomenal job of reading the guidance, staying up with the guidance, figuring out how to navigate teaching music in a world where instruments had to be have masks on, how they had to have masks on. Um, so some of the, you know, some of them made a, a really good attempt to try to kind of keep some consistency and keep that classroom-based assessment going. Um, same at the high schools, we only had, um, limited art offerings and then limited music offerings. We, um, did not replace our coral teacher as a result of the levy. Um, so that limited us to, um, band orchestra and then we also I didn't replace one about art teachers. So from spring, when we are now back in full time at the end of April, um, just trying to regain that sense of being back in school and, and making now our focus was on like, let's get back in, let's make sure we take care of our kids. We didn't put emphasis on them completing the classroom-based assessments. Also because for, um, the spring state assessments have been postponed to the fall. So they can't, you know, OSBI have given us that grace of, of get back in and get, get back into school. Um, Kelly can share a little bit, but our music program at the elementary school, because of the hybrid model, they had to make some significant adjustments there because of the cohorting.
That's exactly it. Um, we laid out our special schedule last year because we were really intentionally co-boarding our students to limit the exposure. So we were limited an amount of time each specialist had with that cohort of students. And we actually ended up being two week rotations with every, um, group of students. So you wouldn't necessarily get back around to see that group of students until a significant element later, which did impact our ability to conduct these assessments in the way that we would. The other thing that was problematic or a little bit more challenging last year is we were also running a full-time, basically like a remote school and an in-person school. So having our specialists working in both worlds was extremely challenging because they were facilitating in-person instruction while also having online responsibilities as well. And so having, you know, ongoing assessments was also challenging last year. So we didn't get the same participation that we'd normally expect. Or our classroom-based assessments. And I would say that's consistent with our social studies classroom-based assessments.
It kind of feels like with COVID and, and the levy and such and just art obviously just got the short end of the stick or whatever, um, definitely. And given that kids move through school in two years' time is really, um, enough time to break somebody's stride in their art development for sure. And so at this point, you're trying to draw kids back into art. And one of the things you said, we kept band and we kept the music, but looking at the equities, you know, who participates in them, it's like, that's not representative of our students as well. So what sort of outreach are we doing to pull kids back into an art program, um, and get them really involved?
Great question, Melinda. One of the things we did after we passed levy, um, moving into this school year is I spent a lot of time with the secondary principals, um, at the exact day, on looking at our, our music program. Our numbers have been declining, um, at the middle level. And we had, I, I can speak from when I was at Horizon, we had combined grade levels, we had, um, choir class of six students. Um, so we worked together and really looked at what, what do we need to do to rebuild from basically, you know, sixth grade up and, and elementary has a very strong group of music teachers. How do we feed that in? Um, so we, we had also moved to after not passing the levy, we'd moved to, we just had a music teacher at Vista, a music teacher at Horizon. Um, so we went back to model from years ago when I first started here, where we have a designated choir orchestra band teacher and those three teachers travel, they start at Horizon and they travel to Vista. So they're teaching in their, um, areas of expertise and strength. Um, and they have created a very strong PLC. They are doing a lot of outreach with students, um. We had great concerts right before winter break, one of them was actually on our school board meeting night in December here at Vista. And then again, at Thunder High School, we replaced the coral teacher that we hadn't replaced twenty twenty. And we have, we used to have high school teachers that traveled to the middle school. So we have now based them at the high school, so there's continuity within like that program. And then they have been working really well as a PLC between the middle and and the high schools and then in the spring, the hope is to go back to, I know Betty Ann Schwed used to refer to them as petting zoos, where she would take instruments out to our elementary students so they could get their hands on them. So going back to making sure that we reach out to our elementary folks and and have our students have the opportunity to just kind of experience what what it might be like. The other piece that that they've been working really hard on is looking at how we can make sure that access to an instrument is not a barrier to participation. So we have a a team of really have a very committed secondary musicians, I think you'd agree, that are go getters and want to make sure that we have options to be able to acquire instruments for those that would like to participate, but potentially could have just been a barrier in the class.
Do you think that's the only barrier as far as the disproportionate participation?
The other, I would say the other piece of it that we've been looking at is what are we offering? The high school particularly has been looking at, they've introduced new classes this year that we're hearing from our students that are interested in taking, so making sure that we meet the needs of our students in that day, also the diversity of music other than just the free traditional and orchestra choir.
Um, for like music classes, I feel like there's like a really big change, not like a change, not change, a change in how student move outcome levels. So if a student start out in middle swim band, they will keep on going until they're in high school. I feel like with COVID and all of the happenings and how students have like that period of, you know, learning instruments and, you know, having that journey and education within the music, that's some kind, some, that's kind of declined, like student interest. And with the high school offering more classes, like for more like engineering, those classes take the student interest more better because with music, you need to have a long history of it to stay within the interest of it. So with me, when I was in choir, I started only sixth grade, so I just continue on with it. And I learned that music takes a lot of time, like theater and because we have performances, we have a lot of things. So if students miss out and like learn the instruments or learn how to like learn the basics to sing, they'll they'll lose like the interest of. So and also one of the key thing that with music classes is that high school students sometimes go back to middle school students and introduce. And I feel like that's our best opportunity to kind of miss out with like, you know, online, so.
Yeah, I can't imagine how hot it would be to have learned an instrument as a, as a sixth grader, particularly when your first six months was behind the screen, learning how to tune up. I I just can't imagine. And when you listen, if if you had the opportunity to listen to them in their concerts, they I I was so impressed with how our students did before winter break, given the fact that they hadn't had concerts for almost two years and had kind of really find that catch up for us now being back in person and face it sounded.
So a question and a commendation, kind of go hand in hand. One is, we've talked about previously and Khan kind of alluded to it, music tends to be this progression. And I go back to my own experience because when I started sixth grade, which is where band started, I had full intentions of joining band and playing saxophone. Got sick, wasn't in school for two weeks, came back, went to see about joining band and was basically told, well, why didn't you start the first week? And while I was sick and that was a bad excuse, therein I don't play the saxophone. So it was nice to see that we've got like the guitar class at the high school, so people who haven't had, you know, been starting sixth grade, have a music option or something. So I think music is a great outlet of things. But where, I know a few years ago, we were talking about curriculum and the sixth grade and there are the middle school level and there were all these different options, but they were all offered at the same time. So you either chose, you know, like robotics or you chose band and there, you know, before it was like you had band orchestra or back in my day, band orchestra or. So the challenge is, is you can, if you're a sixth grader and you go into robotics, or if you don't take robotics, just using that as an example, don't even know. You can do it in seventh grade because you can kind of step in a little differently. Band and even orchestra choir probably same. Is there, is there some way to bridge that gap or do we have anything? And particularly now we're, we've got students who have had COVID years that it makes it hard because you're behind and it takes practice, it takes, you know, time to.
At our sixth grade at both of our middle schools, we have an alternating schedule. So that allows students to experience a few more electives. And then in seventh and eighth grade, it will be a full year, that will be your elective choice. I listened to our middle school orchestra concert right before winter break and our teacher was talking about how she has, within that one of her orchestras, she has students that this is their first year playing. This is their second year playing, this is their third year playing, and for some of them, they have been playing for a long time and all of them were in the same class. So the level of differentiation and and support that was being provided to allow them to as an eighth grader be in an orchestra class, and it was the first time they picked an instrument up. And that's an incredible credit to our teachers and their talent to be able to, and and to have our students help support each other and and do some peer teaching and and just look for them to play together, you couldn't, I couldn't, and I'm also not a musician, but I can look at someone and say, oh, that's clearly your first year and you've been playing for a long time. It wasn't placed obvious to me and I I just take huge credit to our teachers.
That's awesome.
I want to make one, a comment to just on a good part of this report was it was really clear what has happened in the art program the last couple of years and that we need to make strides to get back on track. What was hard reading the report though is like the the points that we're supposed to say, have you made reasonable progress, the ones written in green? Like by the time we got through reading about that thing, then like the conclusions have nothing to do with what that all was. Kind of there, like for point four, it was analyze the impact of the arts graduation requirement on class of twenty nineteen. But then reading through it, it was like, it kind of deviated away from that question. And then when I come back to say, how are the graduation requirements for art impacting the classes? Like, I don't know, because we kind of, we're talking about other things. So it was like, I I definitely got the story of there's been a break in the arts program and we need to to fix it. Kind of these the goals were all written pre-COVID and like no longer apply. So then when it comes down to, did we make reasonable progress or not, I'm like, I don't know. Not sure.
I I think, you know, and you've sort of alluded to that in the reports that we had before. You know, when we look in these, in the eyes of COVID, we did great things with what we were working with. Did we make reasonable progress based on these goals?
Yes.
Not really.
Yeah, it's like, it's like if you say, did you make progress? No. Did you do what was reasonable in this situation? Definitely. Did you make reasonable progress? I have no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just COVID.
And I think the other part that I really appreciated from your comments on those reports that we for approving tonight is, you know, we've got to recognize that COVID was there. And but we've got to look at things in the light of, you know, we can't, COVID explains a lot. We can't totally use it as as an excuse as we move forward, and not that we are, but, you know, it does make it so that, you know, we may not have the promise or the reasonable promise that that we had hoped to make. But the fact that we maintained and did what we did is, like you say, a testament to the teachers and the the people for, you know, coming up with a plan in the midst of, you know, how do you teach somebody to play an instrument remotely? You know, it's hard enough to teach when you're there hands on, you know, trying to tune something.
Yeah, that that goes to giving the kids, the students credit too. I mean, you or no, we have to navigate whatever you're reading, but they have to navigate COVID and being right there at school, whether it's online or in a classroom, but being online is tough for a lot of our kids. And if we could write something down and say it wasn't easy, then that's probably what it was.
Yeah, because it's hard to teach it and it's hard. You know, I remember when I was learning how to play the guitar, you know, trying to tune it was hard enough with somebody right there helping. Trying to do that online and, you know, trying to listen and if you don't have a good internet connection and yeah, it sounds like you did a great job. Other comments or other questions about the report? Then again, if people could get their cover sheets to me, then we will get the summation ready for next next month's consent agenda. Okay, so that brings us on to item eight, which is sharing. And first on that is eight point zero one, which is student school board members. So Paul, take it away.
I'm just going to make it quick because I gotta go home and study for the finals. So so for a couple of weeks now, I've just been working with lots of and meeting with other student representatives across different states. We were just kind of drafting a recommendations, what was like the responsibilities for student school board members should be, because right, like for me and Jazzy, when we first got elected to be in school board, Dr. Quinn says she would go over the responsibilities when we go back in person, but we never got a chance to do that. So I hope that, you know, with the record going on and we'll be figuring out what like our responsibilities are and what we can do, you know, supervise student voice and all that stuff. And then and then also me and Dr. Britt was talking about after, it around where where the things like after finals and all that stuff. Me and Jazzy, we can all have like a meeting because me and me and Dr. Quinn usually have like a monthly meeting where we go over like our projects and all that stuff. Like now with her gone, we can just like slow that down and we never reactivate the project stuff again. I feel like up in February, we just going to start restrategizing what we can do. Yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
You've done an awesome job creating your own roadmap.
So elected board members.
This is your newly elected legislative rep. So the week of January thirty first is our meetings with our two state representatives and our state senator. Peggy and I have signed up for the one with Senator Sessick and the one with Representative Shoemake. Representative Rule has asked for only four people to be present. So given that this is for all of the forty second, still kind of going through who is going to be at that one. I'm not sure exactly why it was only four people there. But on the note of Representative Rule, she is the sponsor of one of the bills that is the hot topic that we want passed. So it's kind of like, we probably don't have to ask her to look for that one.
Would you be a Zoom?
These are Zoom, yes. Yeah, the the meetings with Rule and Shoemake are on Thursday, February third. And as far as I know, I don't think Sessick has set his time yet, but he's still kind of getting settled and he is going to have meetings with us, but hasn't gotten back to it. There are fifteen minutes each, so it's a very quick thing. I think it goes ten and ten fifteen or ten fifteen and ten thirty or something like that. As far as for what hot topics are, there is stabilization of funding, because we all know that like for Inferno School District, our our student population is down about five percent from what it was pre-COVID. To stabilize the funding so that the apportionments that start coming don't follow the crash pain with COVID, that's one of the bills. And there's another hot topic that has to do with, you may have heard that there's a mental health crisis, pretty much agreed with kids. And so funding for social health, mental health, emotional health, behavioral health, that's what Representative Rule is sponsor of one of those bills, she's a mental health professional. And then finally, the third of the hot topics is for transportation. Transportation has been something that historically is underfunded by the state. Have to get those students to school, but they're not necessarily going to give you all the funding you need to do it. So this particular bill would at least get them to pay the actual cost for transporting students that have specific transportation rules in their in their plans and, you know, helping with special education, getting kids transported, et cetera. So those are the three hot topics, stabilization of funding, mental health and transportation. If you want to hear more Sunday, there's a legislative conference, register for that.
If you want to be registered for the Sunday session, send it to Jackson and you'll get a signed up and then you'll get the Zoom link and kind of attend it. If I recall correctly, that's from one to five.
Yeah, like twelve forty five or something like that, Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon.
And wear your pajamas.
Okay, any questions for Melinda or anyone else elected board members to share?
Right? No, I'll talk to him a little bit later.
Okay. Um, Mark.
I have nothing to share. Okay. Executive team?
Just one, as as you guys are going down the path of looking for a new superintendent, we're on a parallel path. Kelly Parsons of the Cascadia has resigned her position effective the end of the year. So we're going to be just behind you guys in looking for our new principal. It'll get posted at the end, we'll be gathering information in February, posting in March and then hiring in April. Allowing for first new select, if they so choose to be involved in the final selection of of the new principal up there, which is probably an important move in their new position, so. Doing that.
That's the only principal position. That's the only change that we know, we know, we know right now.
Okay, then that takes us on to the consent agenda portions of the meeting. One thing that I did want to point out and just ask for input, I, in Mark's and my conversation in regards to the agenda and um in regards to the agenda and such, uh, I had noticed that some of the consent agenda items talked about things that for those of us that have been on the board for a while, we probably have a little bit of understanding such as the the trio or the um communities, uh, the communities and schools programs. Um, but certainly to the newcomers and and even to the public, some of those, it's like, what does this mean? And these, you know, documents given to kind of some legal jumbo mumbo that's a little bit hard to follow. So I asked the Mark to facilitate for the executive team um to just put a little summary of what what does this mean in English and just kind of a brief and I don't know who all was involved with that, but thank you. That was exactly what I was looking for and I found it even helpful for myself. Um, so.
Notice those two, those were helpful.
Yeah, I I think that just helps make it more understandable to the public too, if they're looking at it. Um, and certainly for those that are new to the board, to give a little bit more information and kind of a summation. So, um, it's sounding like that's helpful. I'm gonna ask if they could keep doing that, that would be appreciated. Um, and like I said, the amount of information there I thought was just right. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, so back with the consent agenda, these are a group of items that are those on the superintendent's consent agenda have been delegated to the superintendent but do require board approval. Those on the board consent agenda are items that the board um is responsible for. All of these items have been um presented to the board ahead of time for their review and to ask any question. Um, certainly we can talk about any of those agendas, but we also have the authorization that we can approve those all in one uh motion. So at this time, the chair or the president will open up the floor to any discussion and or a motion to approve the consent agendas. One month.
Does anybody want to make a motion? I will make a motion to approve the superintendent consent agenda and the board consent agenda as attached to me.
It's been moved to approve both the superintendent and board consent agendas as attached here to and made part of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries both consent agendas are approved as presented. So that takes us down to um item eleven, which is the adjournment. We have no executive session at the end of tonight's meeting. We have that beginning. And so I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.